Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delafield Council meeting for Monday, May 5, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please. Molly?
Sure thing. Elder Person Henry here. Elder Person Schaefer.
Here.
Elder Person Valdi.
Here.
Elder Person Wilkin.
Here.
Elder Person Grimmer.
Here.
Elder Person Price.
Here.
Elder Person Loughlin.
Here.
Mayor Iker.
Here.
Administrator Hefner.
Here.
All right. Looking for motion to approve the minutes from our April 21 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second. Any discussion changes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay or abstentions. Okay, minutes.
Wilkin on the second, just to clarify.
Yes. Minutes are passed. Item five, City of Delafield citizens comments. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing none, citizens comments are now closed. Consent agenda, no items on that. Seven, Boards, Committees and Commission reports. A licenses.
Just a reminder that we are in the renewal process, so anybody who has not submitted their application for the alcohol or bartender license renewal should think about doing so relatively soon.
Thank you. Plan Commission, Elder Person Grimmer.
We had a meeting earlier last week. No agenda items tonight. I would just refer you to the minutes. We have some public hearings coming up on uses under CBD 1 and the development of the property just behind us in proximity to the municipal lot.
All right, thank you. Lake Welfare Committee, Elder Person Price.
Yes, I was on vacation at last week's meeting, so I would ask you just to refer to the minutes. I'm still waiting for that to get published.
Great. Park and Recreation Commission, Tree Board.
Park and Rec finalized and approved the last, the final section of our long-range plan. So that's, out of the 12 sections, we're done. Just up to me to get it aggregated and posted.
All right. Let's see. Public Works Committee.
No meeting, no report. Our next meeting is this Wednesday.
All right, I'll have a similar report for Delhart Commission. There was no meeting since our last meeting. Next meeting is in June. Police Commission.
We've not had a meeting, but we have one scheduled for this Wednesday at 5:30.
All right. Library Board. We just had a nice tour.
Yeah, we haven't had a meeting since our last, since our last council meeting, but we did have a nice tour for the council. And so a thank you to Stephanie for putting that on for us and giving us a lot of good information.
All right. Zoning Board of Appeals. Don't believe there was a meeting. Promotional and Tourism Commission.
I have a couple of things I'd like to make note of. Our next meeting is May 13 at 7:30 in the morning, right here, just to note. We have a 2025 campaign up and running and going well. The bike and hike maps have been printed and the 25 through 2027 visitors' guide will be completed in the next few days. Our spring docu-series is currently live. They're really fun. It's on both the website and in social media. And the summer docu-series will be released in a few weeks. The new website is up and live. There are some final edits going on live while it's running, but we feel it's more engaging and easier to navigate. And yeah, that's it for now.
Thanks, Jackie. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Commission. Don't believe there was a meeting. Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board.
We had a meeting on the 16th of April. A couple items I want to draw the board's attention to, the council's attention to. There was an anomaly in February revenue of about $100,000. We didn't have concrete answers as to why the decrease from January to February. There was some speculations on issues surrounding billing practices. Call volume was down from 220 to 188. So Stacy's going to be investigating with our biller the potential reasons of that shortfall. So hopefully more information to come. Second thing is, there was talk and discussion on our dive rescue teams potentially transitioning to sonar to better identify, for lack of a better word, bodies in the water. There is a sonar unit that's universally used by fire departments at Laban Peak, but all the same, there's discussions on how quickly that could access that unit for an emergency. Is it better to purchase one of our own? Just preliminary right now. And then lastly, per the chief, the, there's been lots of rain over the last few weeks and even more since our meeting last week, but as a general announcement to people who burn, burn their grasses, their, their wild areas, there's really a necessity to have private contractors do those burns to ensure public safety. That's all I have.
Great, thanks, Matt. Dear Management Committee, Elder Person Wilkin.
No meeting, no report.
All right. Other Commissions, Committees and Boards, none. Unfinished business, none. Mayor's Report, well, right, following up Dear Management, looking to accept the resignation of Tim Ternock as a citizen member position on the Dear Management Committee.
I move that we accept Tim Ternock's resignation.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion other than thanks, Tim, for years of service? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay or abstentions? Okay, Tim, you are retired from Dear Management, but we're keeping you at work in Park and Rec. Item 9B, confirm appointment of Jamison Chapman to replace Tim on, as a citizen member on the Dear Management Committee.
I move that we confirm the appointment of Jamison Chapman to the Dear Management Committee.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay or abstentions? Okay, welcome, Jamison. He's got a, he's got a connection with a, like a deer cam company too, so, and he's got, maybe can connect us with some hunters. All right. In the packet is a proclamation for the City of Delafield's Recognition of Public Service Week. There's a week for the police, a week for our city staff clerks and our EMS people. So without reading the whole thing, you could do us all a good service here and anyone watching on TV. If you see anybody working for the city, say thank you. They do, they do great work and they're definitely appreciated. And along with that, just point out a couple of people that have been here for a minute. Molly is celebrating her fourth year this month. And Dan Bloatout on our Police Department, been here 30 years. Sean Heinzel beats him by a year. He's been here for 31 in Public Works. And Aaron Cook on DPW as well, he's been here for nine, so must be a decent place to work. New Business, number 10, Approval of the Vouchers Payable List.
I will move to approve the voucher list.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Abstentions? Okay, we're paying our bills. Report of City Officials. City Administrator, Tom.
Yeah, a few different things to update the council on and the public on. First of all, two weeks ago, we did have our sale of our notes for the capital funding for this year, and it was a successful sale. There were seven bidders. The true interest rate came in right at where we expected it to in the pre-sale report, which, which was just a tick over 3.6%. And then we did get a $15,000 premium bid, and we were able to use that premium to downsize the borrowing. So instead of it being 1.765 million, it was 1.75 million. Any questions on that? All right, then the next update is, we are moving forward with the replacement of the City Hall stairs. That went to Plan Commission last week, and there was two options presented to them. And if you look in your, the attachment to the agenda on page eight, what they chose was what's called the social stairs option. It's got planters at the top, and then the right and left thirds of what's, what is currently the stairs are going to be seating areas, and only the middle section will remain as stairs up to the City Hall. From here, that'll, we go into full-scale design over the next month, and then those detailed structural designs go to Public Works Committee in June. By the time we get through, that's not the one, next page. Keep going. That one. And then we go into the bidding process, and we're looking at construction to start probably late August and requirement to be substantially complete by mid-October. Any questions on that? All right, and then one thing that we talked about at last council meeting, but I just want to throw it, throw it out there again as another reminder, we do have the citywide brush collection coming up next week, May 12 to 16. So you have one more weekend left to get the brush cutting down and get that out in the street for the guys. And then one thing that I don't have on the agenda that I want to update you on is, we have been working diligently for over a year with the Public Service Commission on our first ever formal water utility rate case. The utility's been in place for 31 years, and this is our first rate case ever. The PSC said they usually get around to the utilities about every 10 years, but because of how small our water utility is, that they haven't gotten around to us. And our, our utility is such that it is, we've got two components of our rates. One is water usage based on number of gallons used, and then the other is a public fire protection fee, which is based on having the excess pumping and storage capacity to fight fires in the system. And that portion of the bill is based on assessed value. So over time, as assessed value has gone up, it's allowed our rates to keep up with an inflate, with inflation and actually even exceed it to the point where our rates are high. And the Public Service Commission has identified that our rates are to be decreased on average by about 21%. And as a enterprise fund, that, that calculation- And as a enterprise fund, that, that calculation does include us making a return on our money, which I think is a little bit in excess of 5%. So good news for the water utility users. What I'm getting at here is we're at the finish line, and that finish line is a public hearing held by the Public Service Commission, which will be next week Wednesday at 2:00. It's only available on, by Zoom, and most typically, unless the rates are going up significantly, nobody attends. So it's expected that this public hearing will last less than 10 minutes. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Any questions on that? All right, then that's all I have this evening.
Thanks, Tom. Molly, City Clerk's Report.
I'm just going to circle back for a second to the brush collection and remind people to have their stuff out in the beginning of the week, no matter where they live in the city. DPW just kind of works through, so I get, we get a lot of calls in the office about people who have missed the pickup because they put it out in the middle of the week and DPW was already there. So just a reminder, get it out in the beginning of the week. Sorry, Tom. And then to add, to move on to mine, personnel update. Council is aware, I'm going to make the public aware, we are unfortunately losing Crystal to the Village of Elm Grove. She has been here for two and a half years and has been a wonderful employee and has done so well that she's moving on to take on a village clerk position. So we are excited for her, obviously very sad to see her go. That being said, there will soon be a vacancy. We are currently in the process of accepting applications. The application is live online, so if you know anybody who is interested, please do send them to that link to apply. And then the next item is the first meeting of the Board of Review is next week, Monday. If we do not have any hearings, that will be the only meeting of the Board of Review. So anybody who does have any objection, I do recommend filing it. Well, it's, it's required that it be filed the 48 hours in advance of that first meeting, or you have to request a waiver of that notice. So please make sure to get your paperwork in this week, and that is all that I have.
Okay, thank you. City Treasurer, the report is in the minute, in the packet. And then do we have any requests for, from council for future agenda items? As always, if something comes up, just bring it up to Tom, me, or staff, and we'll consider it. How about that? All right, and then from here, we're looking for a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to the filing provisions. Motion to convene in closed session pursuant to provisions of Wisconsin Statute 1985-1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically for bargaining reasons involved with the negotiation of funding options as a part of the Wisconsin Policy Forum Lake Country Fire and Rescue Funding Study.
So moved.
It's Mark, and then.
I'll second.
Take the senior. Okay, roll call, vote please.
Just getting my times here, 7:17. Elder Person Henry.
Aye.
Elder Person Schaefer.
Aye.
Elder Person Valdi.
Aye.
Elder Person Wilken.
Aye.
Elder Person Grimmer.
Aye.
Elder Person Price.
Aye.
Elder Person Loughlin.
Aye.
Great, thank you. We are now in closed session, and this is likely to be our, this is our last item on the agenda, so.
Okay, welcome back everyone. I'm looking for a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second.
So that's Danielle and Mark. Roll call vote please.
Other person Henry?
Aye.
Other person Schaefer?
Aye.
Other person Valdi?
Aye.
Other person Wookin?
Aye.
Other person Grimmer?
Aye.
Other person Price?
Aye.
Other person Leflin?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now we're in open session. Anybody care to make a motion based on what was discussed?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised Lake Country Fire and Rescue Funding Formula, which includes call volume at 60%, assessed value at 20%, population at 20%, with a two-year phase-out of the fixed base portion of the funding formula in both operations and capital.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have a few things to say about this. While I think this is a great step in the right direction, getting rid of the fixed portion, I'm concerned with the 60% based on call volume, specifically because we see high call volumes in our senior and assisted living facilities. And putting such a weight on the call volumes that way, I feel will discourage the communities from building these facilities or allowing these facilities into the communities, which I think, given the population of this area, I think it's really important that we not discourage from that, from building new facilities and having those facilities in our communities. We want to be able to keep our residents in our community. And I worry that this would be discouraging that. So, and I just, that would be my biggest concern with that.
Okay. Any other comments?
I have some issues with the call volume. The 60% call volume is a lot because the cost is driven by